I'd like to call the council order to meet here with a pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Ron Heckman.
All right, everybody, stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You seated? Ms. Zumbel, can you call the roll?
Mr. Kuzic.
Present.
Mr. Deetz.
Here.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Kraft.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. Serinski.
Here.
All present, peg by phone.
Before we do anything else, I'd like to recognize some of the people in the audience. We have a lot of county executives in the audience. We have Mr. Jerry Saifert. We have Jane Irvin from Lehigh County. We have Glenn Reedman. We also have Ann McHale, who was a county councilperson on this body for 12 years, and Mr. Yob, who served for 40 years as mayor of Freemansburg. So, welcome you all here. Pardon me? I missed Mr. Panto. Where's he hiding?
That's okay. They're more important.
Hey, Mr. Panto. All right. Sorry, Sal. Need approval of the minutes for February 1, 2018?
Motion to approve by acclamation.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion moves. Next up, hold on, we're waiting for the sheet.
For the sheet.
Courtesy of the floor, I have one person signed in, Mr. Sal Panto.
Thank you, Mr. President. Glad to call you President. Members of the board, thank you very much for this opportunity. I guarantee you, and I assure you, I will be very, very brief and short. First of all, I want to welcome all the new members. I want to thank the old members who were here for working with us for over the last eight to 10 years, regardless of how long you've been on. We've always had a good working relationship regardless whether we agree on everything or not. We've at least got along. We agreed without being disagreeable. I would like to thank the returning members for the support of the Da Vinci Science City Project in Easton, which I believe is vital not only as a tourist attraction in our county, but also important to our workforce development for the jobs and the future of the area of science, technology, engineering, and math. I know that some of you will be voting this evening to cancel a grant commitment that was made by the previous council to our project, but we encourage the new county members and the new administration, we've already talked to them, to learn as much as you can about the project so that you can make a strategic investment in tourism, economic development, and equality of life in Northampton County at a later date. I ask that we work collaboratively with your administration and members of council to consider the optimum strategy for county participation in the project. We can meet individually, or you can attend the various public meetings we'll be having throughout the county. We've already held over 50 individual meetings with content experts from area corporations, colleges, and universities, and community organizations, culminating in several think tank sessions with architects and exhibit designers. We received valuable input and feedback through the extensive meetings and how the feedback we have received influenced our recent changes that were made in the master plan, including the transition from an aquarium to the nature dome, and the potential for the nature dome to be more distinctive than and as compelling as an aquarium. The project has also raised $1.2 million needed for the initial planning process, and of that amount, $420,000, I think, is significant. That $420,000 of that came personally from Da Vinci board members, not from their company, but from them personally. And the remaining funds from local individuals and corporations, including PPL, and locally from Eastern Hospital and Lafayette College, who provided $25,000 each towards that $1.2 million. There have been many questions about the master plan that has changed over time as we went through our financial planning period, and we will be receiving what we will call the final master plan at the end of the month, and we'll be bringing in one of the internationally renowned architects working on the project to make a public presentation on February 27th to this council. I ask if you want to, not to this council, I'm sorry, that's in March, February 27th, our city council meeting. I ask if you want to, especially the new board members, maybe you would like to attend, as Mr. McClure did, a couple of weeks ago, at our Bank Street Annex presentation. This one is open to the public and not by invitation only. Again, I thank you, and would be happy to meet individually after the presentation if you'd like to do so, to learn more about this project. And, Mr. Kraft, I'd like to thank you for the time you've given me yesterday on the phone, and again this evening at public presentation. Thank you, Sal. Have a great day.
That was the only person that's signed up. Does anybody else wish to address council tonight? Sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Matthew Dees, 407 Second Street in West Easton. I'm here as usual. The council will hear a complaint. I know I'm a councilman in West Easton. My complaint is with your work release center. In 2015, the developer came before the 2015 council, which I was not a member, and asked for a bar to be lowered for the type of residents that would occupy the center, telling us they would be nonviolent, non-drug dealers, et cetera. Council accepted that change. Oh, and they also raised the amount of residents. Council at that time accepted the change. In 2000, let me go back some history here. In 2014, there was one walk away from the center. We call them escapes. I think Northampton County calls them walkaways. In 2015, there was none, and after the change in 2015, in 2016, there was four; 2017, there was eight. And I have a list of those that were printed in the Express Times. A resident of West Easton, I'm trying to get verification through a right-to-know of exactly how many there are, tells me there was 37 total, so I'm trying to get verification of that. Some of these people that walked away, one gentleman named Navah choked his wife unconscious, threatened her with a machete, and the judicial system dropping some charges, he ended up in West Easton. He escaped. Carlton Duval, he was picked up with 41 packets of heroin. Instead of being charged with possession with intent to deliver, it was dropped to just possession. He ended up in West Easton. Two weeks later, he was gone. Aaron Crekmore, three days before he escaped, he posts on Facebook, "Surprise you hateful" whatever bag, it's blackened out here, "I'm free, I'm going to kill you for what you did to me. Good luck knowing I'm free, watch your back." He escaped from West Easton, work release facility. I have residents complaining about the facility, the trash, the people outside the gate, problems with cars being left on the street while they're in the work release facility. It seems to be turning into some type of facility that wasn't the original intention of this council or West Easton. Someone here, or all of you, need to look into what's happening down there and make corrections and changes, either to the facility or how you handle these work release inmates. Put anklet bracelets if they're going to go to work, take them off when they get back, but keep track of them, because West Easton, quite frankly, is getting sick of what's going on down there, and we're going to begin to push back. Now, if you don't like what I'm saying, you're more than welcome to take that facility, and we'll pay the extra two and a half mil it costs us not to have your $50,000 cap that we get, because right now, we don't want it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address council tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda. The next thing we have on the agenda is confirmation of appointments, reappointments. We had a, I think, about a two-hour meeting last night, the longest in history. I'm going to ask Mr. McGee to introduce the resolution, and it's quite lengthy, so hold on to your seats.
The appointments and reappointments were reviewed at yesterday's Personnel Committee meeting, but we do have a few here that we would like to recognize and thank them for volunteering. I'll just go down through here before I start into the resolutions. Is that all right, Mr. Chairman? Airport Authority, Mr. Glenn Reedman. Election Commission, Kathy Fox, Deborah Hunter. General Purpose Authority, Frank Pintabone and Paul Anthony Jr. Jail Advisory Board, Jody Ruggiero and Robin Rivera. And the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, Mitch Mogulisky. The first resolution. Okay, great. Thank you. The Airport Authority Board resolved by the Northampton County Council that the following individuals shall be confirmed in their appointment, reappointment, as indicated hereafter. Airport Authority Board, appointment, Glenn Reedman. Term to expire, 12/31/22, 2022. Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council, appointments, Ruth Van Terrace. A term to expire, January 1, 2020. Conservation District Board, council liaison, appointment, Tara Zarinsky. Term to expire, December 31, 2018. Reappointment on the Conservation District Board is Jeffrey Kiefer. Term to expire, December 31, 2021.
Sorry about that. You're out of time.
Election Commission, appointments, Kathy Fox, Ms. Hornick, Deborah Hunter. Term to expire, December 31, 2019. Election Commission reappointments, Mary Diggs and George Trezner. Term to expire, December 31, 2019. General Purpose Authority, appointments, Paul Anthony Jr. Term to expire, December 31, 2022. And Frank Pintabone, term to expire, December 31, 2019. Jail Advisory Board, appointments, Jody Ruggiero. Term to expire, December 31, 2019. And two reappointments, term to expire, December 31, 2019, Edward Boscola and Sharon Garantson. Okay, continuing on with the reappointments to the Jail Advisory Board is Daniel Wood, Robin Rivera, and Dr. Michelle Santiago. And those terms will expire December 31, 2019. Lehigh and Northampton Transportation Authority, appointment, Iris Laniers. Term to expire, March 2, 2023. Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, appointments, council liaison, William McGee. Term to expire, December 31, 2018. Elected official Gerald Yob, term to expire, December 31, 2021. Elected official Mitch Mogulsky, term to expire, December 31, 2021. And appointments, Deborah Bodine, term to expire, December 31, 2021. Mental Health, Early Intervention and Development Programs Advisory Board, appointments, Jean Morgano. Term to expire, January 23, 2021. Retirement Board, appointments, employee representative, Tom Guth, Thomas Guth. Term to expire, December 31, 2019. And retirement employee representative Gerald Saifert. Term to also expire, December 31, 2019. Revenue Appeals Boards, Carl Longenbach, Tom Seedorf, and John Weiss. Term to expire, December 31, 2019.
So moved?
Yep. So moved.
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion on the confirmation of appointments? Any more discussion?
Mr. President, many of those people are in the audience.
Yeah, he recognized them in the beginning.
I was going to ask if they could stand at some point before we...
Okay.
Yeah, you know, yeah. Okay, you know, I approve all appointments except the ones, the unexpired term on the General Purpose Authority. I vote no there.
Thank you, Peg. If there are any other discussion on this length? We had this discussion last night for two hours. We went through everybody. Everybody was here, I believe, except for Mr. Deetz, who was be disposed. Any other discussion?
If I may, Mr. President, I also will not say yes to the appointments for the General Purpose Authority.
Which one?
The Frank Pintabone and Paul Anthony.
Any other discussion?
Do you want to separate that one out?
Well, it was...
We could separate that one out if you want.
That's why I brought it up, because it looked like it was going to be a bundle, and at least felt someone might object. I know I did, so.
All right.
We're going to vote on all but the GPA.
We'll vote all, but the GPA, and then we'll vote on the GPA, the one that was called out individually, okay? So, call for the vote.
Peg.
Yes.
We're going to vote on all but GPA.
Okay, for the GPA. GPA, which one?
We're going to do GPA separately.
Yes.
Okay. So, on the appointments, Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Kraft.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Serinski.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
And Mr. Deetz.
Yes.
Now for the vote on the GPA.
Well, I'll read it into the thing again.
Announce the vote. The votes on the appointments except for the GPA is...
Well, just one of the GPA. Okay.
No, we have to do GPA together because...
Well, they're two different things. Peg's contending the one that's not...
Do you want to do two separate GPA?
All right. GPA, General Purpose Authority, the appointment of Mr. Paul Anthony Jr. from Bethlehem, PA, term to expire, 12/31/22. Any discussion on Mr. Anthony?
Not so much a discussion, a question for both, or either Mrs. Ferraro or Mr. Warner. What would be their specific objections to those two individuals?
Yeah.
I just have a personal objection to it right now.
Can you elaborate?
I would prefer not to.
Well, I'm only calling for Paul Anthony's vote.
May I, Mr. Chairman, then? I just want to say, you know, everybody's right to their objection or not. I'm going to support the two, but I would like to, and I know, I would hope, I don't know how accurate or inaccurate information is regarding the General Purpose Authority at this point in time, but I really think, for whatever reason, I would hope the appointees would really take a look and see what's happening, because I'm of the opinion that county council creates these authorities, and ultimately, at the end of the day, we get a position given to us, and we do the appointment. Now, I know there's some discussion about who appoints who if a term is not been, is just being vacated. I, maybe it's murky legally, maybe it's not, but I'd be willing to say, as a county council member, I'd be willing to go to the mat legally, because I think, as Mr. James Hemstree said, boards and authorities are like runaway doomsday machines. Once you create them, you can't do anything with them. And at the best, they provide a service, sometimes a necessary evil. At their worst, I use this term later, some of the people can get to feel that they've been anointed, not appointed. So, I would just wish everybody luck. I want to thank everybody. I voted, and I'm voting for the two people that have been brought up. But the General Purpose Authority, there's been a lot going on, and I have to be honest, I'm concerned, but I'm not going to hold that against this vote.
I concur with you. You know, I chaired the Personnel Committee for six years, would have been going on seven had I not done this here, and, you know, we always appoint people to authorities and boards. The contention that Ms. Ferraro has sent around to everybody many, many times is she believes that the authority appoints their own people. I see no problem with either of these.
That's not...
I have, you'll have your turn, Peg. You'll have your turn, Peg. I am going to support both of these. We had it in the committee yesterday. You objected yesterday, Peg. It came out of committee unanimously. Everybody was here except for Mr. Deetz, so I think these should go through without any problem, and I will support them 100%. Peg, you're on.
I'm only questioning the unexpired term and the procedure. I felt that there was some legal stuff that needed to be worked out on that, at least for the parties to come together and sit down and talk about it. But that didn't happen, so I would prefer to err on the side of caution and not appoint someone to that position, not vote to appoint someone to that position. I don't object to Mr. Pintabone. I don't, whoever the executive nominees to these boards is fine with me, but I just object to the procedure. Okay? So, let's vote.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Do we have advice from the council? Is there any issue from us voting on someone or that position?
No, is there a motion pending? Has there been a second?
Yeah.
Then, is there a further discussion? The chairman should call for a vote.
I'll call for a vote. On the two together or two apart?
We didn't second these yet.
That's what I'm asking.
Well, we don't have a motion and a second for appointment. It came through the board, and they were recommended to us for a vote, a discussion and a vote. And we separated these twos out, because Peg and the attorney from the GPA thinks that, you know, they have their own entity, and they can do what they want. The county executive has chosen two people for two terms that are up, and that's what we're doing. We're reappointing people to terms, to fill vacant terms, like we always have over all the years I've been here, and Mr. Kuzic's been here, and everybody. So, you know, you can vote yes or no for whomever you like, for whatever reason you want, but like I said, I'm supporting these. I don't believe the solicitors. I was at the meeting and had a little back and forth with him about it, and he has his opinion, and the county executive, and everybody else has theirs.
Mr. Chairman, could we vote for each one separately?
That's what I'm saying. We should vote for each one separately. So, the first vote I'm calling for, and I'll do it again, General Purpose Authority, Mr. Paul Anthony Jr., term to expire, 12/31/22. Call for the vote, please.
Is there a motion and a second?
Not yet.
We need a motion and a second?
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All right. Call for the vote.
Who put the motion?
William McGee.
Another repeat of last night.
Mr. Kraft.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
No.
Ms. Serinski.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Deetz.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to one.
All right. And the next one is the General Purpose Authority. It's a replacement of an expired term of Mr. Frank Pintabone, term to expire, 12/31/19. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
A motion and a second? I think we discussed it, but you want to have another discussion about it?
Just one point. My only concern here is, you know, Mr. Pintabone recently resigned from the Eastern Area School Board claiming he didn't have enough time, and now he's being asked to be appointed to another board. So, for that reason, I will be voting no. That's all.
Well, if I could expand on that, you know, this thing meets in the morning, once a month, at 8:15 in the morning. I don't think it infringes on much like a school board position does, so. Any other discussion on this? Call for the vote.
Mr. Kraft.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
No.
Ms. Serinski.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
No.
Mr. Deetz.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
No.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
And Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Passes by a vote of six to three.
Thank you.
Hey, could you clarify, why was the other, who voted no? Could you clarify who voted no on the first, on Mr. Anthony?
Mr. Warner.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Does she have this stuff in front of her? Did I send it to her? All right, I want to thank all the people who took these boards and authorities. Thank you very much for stepping up and doing this. It's, you know, a lot of times, it's not a very good thing. It's very busy, and we appreciate it. Thank you. Next thing we have on the agenda is the county executives' report.
Mr. President, I just want to gently disagree with you about one thing. It is a very good thing you guys are doing this for us. Thank you.
Yeah, it is a very good thing. Thank you.
Can I recognize Mr. Saifert's coat, please?
Yes, there is.
For the record, I'd like to recognize that Mr. Saifert has worn an excellent coat.
That's why I appointed him. So, just...
I forgot about that.
Hide it.
This is the county executive's report, not the fourth one.
Today, I had the pleasure of meeting with the county executive and his finance director and Charles, and I gave him some words of wisdom. And I'll show that with you this evening, and it's very brief. You know, I'm on the upside, I'm closer to 80 than I anticipated. So, these words of wisdom are, never, never, ever, take a sleeping pill and a laxative at the same time. Have a good day.
Thank you.
So, fortunately, the retirement board only meets four times a year.
Yes, yes.
Be careful by 2021.
We have just digressed.
Well, now, we're up to the county executives' reports, but it's really in goes.
I know you have an extensive agenda to get through tonight, so very briefly, there have been some reports regarding illnesses in the prison. And over the past weekend, unfortunately, one of our very young corrections officers passed from this life to the next. And let's just take a moment to extend to the family how sorry we are for their loss. 29 years old is too young to leave. With that said, there was some concern that it was flu that took him, and the coroner, Mr. Lysik, investigated the death and ruled that it was definitively not flu that caused him to lose his life. I have not, I do know what the cause of death is. I have not publicly revealed it, because I have not spoken with the family, and I don't have their permission to reveal it. There is another gentleman who is a corrections officer who's ill, seriously ill, hospitalized. Again, not a documented case of flu. And finally, we have one inmate under observation in the prison. He was quarantined from the population because he had a fever, but the healthcare provider does not believe it's flu. So, it's very, you know, on that front, it's good, essentially good flu news thus far. We're monitoring it very closely. One of the things, so as soon as I heard about this, we immediately began to try and understand what happened. The prison went on lockdown. I mean, they reacted very quickly. And one of the things we learned is that, you know, when you're taken into a prison, you're not put into general population immediately. So, you're segregated from the general population for a few days. So, it's actually a good way to pick up whether someone who's coming into the facility is sick. So, someone characterized it as being one of the safest, because as you know, Northampton County has been particularly hard-hit. hard hit with flu. But someone characterized it...I wouldn't characterize it this way, but someone in the system did, that it's one of the safer places to be with respect to getting this kind of communicable disease. So, that's that. The walkaways in West Easton, we have been looking into that. I believe we're going to have a meeting. We're trying to schedule a meeting with Councilman Dees and some other folks from West Easton to try and hear what their concerns are, see what we can do to ameliorate their concerns. But what I have learned, and I don't know each individual case, okay, but what I have learned with these walkaways is it's often they don't come back. So, it isn't that they're walking...so, they go to work and then they don't come back. So, it isn't...so, they're never walking back into West Easton when they're absconding. So, while it's not great that they don't return to custody, because that's what they're supposed to do, they're not coming back to West Easton either, and they're not leaving the work release facility and leaving through West Easton to escape. So, I respectfully would say that walkaways is a more appropriate way to describe it than escape, although the rising numbers probably correlate with the fact that we're putting more and more people into West Easton. Right now, I believe we're at 120, so we fluctuate from 120 to 125 at West Easton. The Councilman Dees, and I don't know this for certain, but Councilman Dees' observation that we probably have some folks in there that maybe otherwise wouldn't be there if we had our work release, the portion of our prison where we have work release offenders who maybe shouldn't be at work at West Easton, but who should have work release. So, we're going to fix that problem, and that problem is basically we need a door that locks between floors because we have women on one floor, men on the bottom floor, and we can't lock that door. So, and we have to. So, we're going to go out to bed. We're going to lock that, and that'll give us 35 more work release beds for folks who maybe have the kind of histories that Councilman Dees described, and then those folks won't need to go over there, and we'll be able to address those concerns. GPA. Mr. Heckman, we've identified...I believe I've identified the global issue with GPA. It's my view that GPA historically was an authority that provided a wonderful service for St. Luke's, Lafayette, you know, Lehigh, whoever needed to run large bond issues, and the GPA did that for them. I think they got a little bit away from their mission, but with that said, I think that we've isolated what the problem is. I think we're going to, over time, deal with that problem. I think it's one problem, and I think it will be taken care of in the near term. And I'll give you an example. So, in the P3 process, the solicitor prepared documents for the, you know, the contracts that were executed and then copyrighted them. So, all of this stuff is paid for by public money, and the solicitor's law firm has the copyrights. So, I think we've gotten a little bit beyond the GPA's mission. It's a thing that will not be corrected overnight, but it will get corrected. Sure.
Are we going to look into the whole copyright thing?
Yes, we already are. Yeah, we already are. I don't have anything else. Anybody have any questions for me?
Sure.
It's good that it wasn't the flu, but with some people, multiple people coming down with something, is there something else contagious or anything else that we should worry about?
Not that I've heard.
Okay.
And I haven't asked the question, but I will.
Well, since he likes recognizing everything Eagles, Mr. McClure is wearing an Eagles tie in honor of the team in the Super Bowl.
Is there anybody else wearing any Eagles stuff that we should recognize?
I don't have any advice.
No advice?
I have no advice.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McClure. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Next thing on our...well, we're up to old business, so here we are. Next thing on the agenda is a public hearing on the Da Vinci Science Center. An ordinance was introduced by Mr. Dietz and Mr. Kuzic in the February 1st meeting, and the public hearing debate and possible vote will be held at this meeting. At this time, if there's anyone from the public who has any questions or comments, please come forward.
Would you like to address counsel?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you all. Jane Irvin, as you know, former county executive, but more importantly tonight, a board member of the Da Vinci Science Center, and I'm here, first of all, to welcome the new county council people and to tell you that I know how you feel. There's a lot of information being thrown your way as new council people, and we totally understand how hard it is to absorb all this. I mean, you're already hearing about, you know, prison diseases and walkaways and all kinds of stuff that you probably never heard of before until you got here. So, I get it. But I do want you to know that I bring a very strong commitment to the Da Vinci project from the Board of Directors. As the mayor said earlier, the board has committed over $420,000 individually to this project. So, we believe that this is going to go, and it's going to be a terrific project. We're pleased with the progress that we've made so far. The architects, engineers, et cetera, have done a fabulous job of designing this beautiful facility, and I would like to encourage all county council members to take the time to learn as much as you can about this project and the impact that it will have on the city of Easton and Northampton County. It really is unprecedented in scope. There's nothing like it. There's nothing like it in the state of Pennsylvania. So, it will have a huge economic impact for your city and your county. The city recognizes that. They've committed $30 million. The state recognizes that. They have committed at least $20 million, and I would like to encourage the county council members to be bold and think big and realize the impact that it's going to have on your community. We intend to bring a world-class science center to Easton, and we're confident that you'll take the time to review it, take a look at it. There's no rush. You can do it over time, and we're happy to accommodate any questions that you have at any time. So, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Irvin. Does anybody else wish to address counsel at this time? Seeing no one. Are there any questions or comments from current county council members? Mr. Kuzic?
Well, I mean, I was here when this was voted on back in December. I think, you know, what really troubles me is that six weeks after we commit $10 million to a project, it substantially changes. And there was no indication, either privately or publicly, from Ms. Erickson, who's been here multiple times. And that, to me, what I've seen is a pattern, and it started when we had inkling that there may be a competing aquarium, and she wasn't particularly forthright and forthcoming about that information. So, I think what I've seen, a pattern here, and we've just heard a request for, what, going bold and big, I would urge you all to exercise caution and fiscal prudence because you never know. In six weeks, this might change again.
Are there anybody...Mr. Dietz?
Just in reference to, you know, educating ourselves on it, I think that's what we all want. We're all waiting for the feasibility to come back and the data to back up the claims on what it will do.
Sure, Mr. Erickson.
Some folks have talked to me, and I've had some phone calls. I hate that when things...I've been on this turntable before, but I mean, whatever I think the majority of council does tonight, this isn't any vote that would be anti-Easton. In fact, if anything, I think...I've said this, and I'll say it again. This is the county seat. I mean, if it were up to me, we would have a government center downtown, non-court related. But that being said, yeah, I mean, I love the history of Easton. I mean, if you look at the reading of Declaration of Independence, I mean, Easton has a rich, rich history, and being a history guy, that's big for me. But no, I'd like to see Easton get a good project. Whether I like this project or not isn't really necessary. What's necessary is, is that if Easton has an idea and they present it, I'm ready to support it. I do agree with what Mr. Kuzic said. I think that...I think it was a major change, and the amount being the same, 140 for an aquarium and 140 for this nature. I don't understand it, and I do understand we need to get more information, and I pledge that I will do my best to do that. But I think sometimes I'd like to see some financial folks weigh in because we've been hit with a lot of numbers, especially and I'll put myself on that list as a new person. We've been told a lot of things will happen, and I've heard a lot of things over the years. So, maybe I'm a little too jaded, but I just want to assure...the mayor's here, and I know other folks. I want to see us do something with Easton. Let's put it that way. Thank you. That's all I have.
Anybody else, council? Mrs. Vargo?
Of course, Peg wants to get in here.
Okay, but it's my turn. Thank you.
Peg, I'll get you right after Lori's done.
I just want to say that nobody's talked to me, nobody's called me, and I keep being told I'm invited to go to things to see it, and it's during my regularly scheduled work hours. So, that precludes me from going. What I've heard, I agree with on this counsel, and what concerns me is if I give a no vote tonight, it's not no against the project and it's not no against the city of Easton. It's no against the amount of money and the amount of time, that I'm not going to hostage this county for 40 years, precluding any other project to come. And so, I really hope that Easton hears that and doesn't see it as a no support for the project, but it's a no support on the amount of money. And the original vote could certainly have waited till we got here in January, and that is my second reason that I will be voting no on this project.
Hi. Okay. My first thought with this one, rather than throwing out the whole ordinance and starting over, I thought it could be amended. That was my first choice. But my biggest concern is that you're going to assure us, that the county executive will assure us, that the $250,000 will go to Da Vinci in the 2018 budget as promised.
Mr. Kuzic?
Just if I could respond, there's nothing in this ordinance that would remove that line item from the budget. That is a separate issue.
Did you hear that, Peg?
Yeah, but that's not what Duran told me.
Oh, God.
So, that worried me a little bit. I just want to be confirmed that they'll get their money this year. Then we'll go from there.
Is there anything else besides that, Peg?
Not really. You know, I just felt it could be amended, but we've had a long discussion about that, too. So, I'll go along with the team this time, but as long as I know they're getting their $250,000.
Thank you, Peg. Anybody else from council? Mr. Zerinsky?
We did discuss this last time, did we not?
Yes.
So, this was about the 40 years. We don't like the term, and we didn't like the amount, right?
Yes.
So, we've basically already understood this, and this is going to come back up, and it's just going to be different, right?
Yes. It's the fun of being in government. You hear the same thing 27 different ways.
It is. It is. 27 different ways.
Is there anybody...Mr. Warner?
Just weighing real fast. I know that the four...I even said the 40 years was not acceptable, but you have to fight for those things that you need, okay? We know where this is going. We've discussed it. The repeal is in place, okay?
But none of us are against this project per se.
That's exactly the point.
So, why is it always being brought up that we're against this project or against Easton? It's not.
For the record, this council has not indicated, neither has the executive, that they're against any project coming to Easton. I understand that.
Right.
More importantly, I know that, and it was brought up before, that we will make efforts to discuss the amount of money and the terms so that we can maybe move forward to make this project happen. Now, that's the key to this whole thing tonight. And I will...I got to tell you right up front, though, I'm going to...I'm voting for the program because it's in Easton, and I'm going to fight for it. But you guys can vote the way you want, okay?
Well, I look forward to projects like this. I think this is beneficial for everyone. We just have to make sure it fits at the right place.
Is there any other discussion from county council? Mr. Kuzic?
Mr. President, just...
Mr. Kuzic's up. One second, Peg.
Just to clarify, a yes vote is a vote for the ordinance to repeal.
Yes. Yes. I was going to do that before the vote was called. Peg, last time, Peg.
Okay. I just want somebody to say yes, they're getting the $250,000 this year.
That's not the issue.
That's not what's...okay, thank you, Peg. Now...
Too hard to hear. I'm sorry.
That's okay. We're hard to hear here, too, with your phone making all that noise.
She's eating cornbread.
Okay. All right. All I'd like to say is I'm going to vote yes to repeal this, but I also have told the Da Vinci Science Center and everybody involved that they are going to come here and present this project to us again March 1st, and they are going to have their full time to tell us exactly what's going on, and I plan to support Da Vinci Science Center's new endeavor if what they bring us makes sense. So, with that...
Mr. Chairman, I echo his words. I feel the same way about it, that I plan on supporting their new plan if it makes sense. And I agree with Lori and Tara and Ms. Hefner and Ms. Zerinsky that it's 40 years is a long term. It's just too long. So, thank you.
Okay. Seeing that, can we call for a vote?
Do you want me to read it?
Read the vote. Read the...
Well, I'll let Mr. Kuzic introduce it and read the ordinance. I'm sorry.
Sure. An ordinance of Northampton County Council pursuant to the Hotel Room Rental Tax Act of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the Tourist Promotion Law of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, an ordinance numbers 359 of 2000 and 440 of 2005, determining that Da Vinci Science Center, a not-for-profit corporation within Northampton County, engaged in tourism-related activities that benefit Northampton County and therefore directing a portion of the Northampton County annual allocation of 12.5% of the revenue generated by the Hotel Room Rental Tax Act and Northampton County ordinances 359 of 2000 and 440 of 2005 to be distributed to the Da Vinci Science Center for the Da Vinci Science Center project located in Easton, Pennsylvania in accordance with this ordinance. And I will skip down to the end. Now, therefore, be it hereby ordained and enacted by the Northampton County Council that ordinance number 628-2017, the ordinance titled "An Ordinance of Northampton County Council Pursuant to the Hotel Room Rental Tax Act of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the Tourist Promotion Law of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania," and ordinance numbers 359 of 2000 and 440 of 2005, determining that the Da Vinci Science Center, a not-for-profit corporation within Northampton County, engage in tourism-related activities that benefit Northampton County and therefore directing a portion of the Northampton County allocation of 12.5% of the revenue generated by the Hotel Room Rental Tax Act and Northampton County ordinances 359 of 2000 and 440 of 2005 to be distributed to Da Vinci Science Center for the Da Vinci Science Center project located in Easton, Pennsylvania in accordance with this ordinance, is hereby repealed on the effective date of this ordinance. Thank you.
And I would like to reiterate, a yes vote is for repeal, and Mrs. Zembel, could you please call for the vote?
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
No.
Ms. Zerinsky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferraro?
No.
Passed by a vote of seven to two.
Okay. Next thing on the agenda...
Did we assert that...did we confirm that they will be getting the money this year? That's all I want to know.
Peg, that's not the issue.
It is the issue.
The item...
We were told that the money is still a line item. It is still in the budget. It is not affected by us repealing this ordinance.
Okay.
Can you put your phone on mute, please?
I am now. Yes.
You're killing me here. Thank you. Next thing we have is the...we have an ordinance that was introduced by Mr. Warner and Mr. McGee at the February 1st meeting. The public hearing, debate and possible vote will be held at this meeting. It's an ordinance entitled for the Bethlehem Lower Salk in Lurde. You need something?
Go ahead.
You need something? Okay. Ask if anybody from the...is anybody from the audience like to speak to this ordinance? Alesha Carter.
Good evening. Alesha Miller, Carter, Director of Community and Economic Development for the city. I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to present two weeks ago at the Economic Development Committee, and thanks for your consideration this evening, and I'm available for any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience wish to address this matter? Anybody else from the audience wish to address this matter?
The only thing I'd like to say is.
See none?
Is there anybody from council who would like to address the matter? Mr. McGee?
Yeah, I just, I looked it over, and I was here for the presentation that I think they did a great job presenting, and I know it's a little late in the game, but I thought it was missing some responsible language for maybe some of the contractors that perform the work, so, I mean, I'd be looking at that in the future on some of the other ones that might come to fruition. Thank you.
Anybody else from the scene? None? I asked Mr. Warner, read in the ordinance?
We are, as at said public hearing, the city of Bethlehem having jurisdiction and in about the county of Northampton, its subordinate governmental units and other public and private agencies, and individuals presented to the Northampton County the recommendations concerning the locations, the boundaries of deteriorated neighborhoods and deteriorating areas, now therefore be attained by the county council of Northampton County. There are numerous definitions, eligible areas, going through nine pages, and I'll defer all that and get to the last page, which is, we killed how many trees for this?
There's like more than 10.
Yeah, okay. This ordinance shall take effect on 30 days after the date of enactment, retroactive to January 1st, 2018, and shall remain in effect thereafter from year to year unless repealed until December 31st. This ordinance was advertised on and is to be voted on this council, by this council.
Can we call for the vote, please?
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Craft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
And Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay, is there any old business to discuss in county council? Seeing none, go into new business. Uh, next thing on the agenda is introduction of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Amending Northampton County Council Ordinance Number 526-2010, also known as the Northampton County Governmental Accounting Standard Board Statement, Number 54 Fund Balance Policy Ordinance. I'd ask for an introduction, somebody to introduce it?
I will.
Mr. Warner, second sponsor?
What is it?
Ms. Vargo Hefner? Yes, you can. Uh, there'll be a, indicate there'll be a public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at the March 1st, 2018 meeting. You had something about this you wanted to say, Mr. Heckman?
I was gonna mention at the end, I mean, I.
We're at the end.
Well, when we did committee reports. But, no, no, I'd like to see this come before the finance committee meeting before the first. Therefore, I did talk to Mr. Kuzick, I had a chance to catch Ms. Zirinsky in passing, but I know Mr. Warner and I have a little bit more free time generally than those two. It looks like we're looking at Tuesday, would it be the 26th?
Monday, the 26th.
No, Tara can't, Tara said Tuesday was best for her, or Monday.
That's the 27th.
All right, Tuesday, the 27th, at 4:00 PM, to discuss.
To review this.
To review what changes have been proposed, and then maybe we can bang out some things and talk about it when we're ready to hit the road.
And I concur, you should look at this and then have it back to us, have your opinion on this when you come back.
That's an important issue.
Are you having it here?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, yes.
It'll be advertised.
It's advertised.
This is so that Linda can advertise it and we can, whoever wants to come, I think we should have a committee discussion on this before there's public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Heckman. Next thing on the agenda is consideration of selection of controller. Mr. McGee, could you please introduce the resolution?
Yes. Be it resolved by the Northampton County Council that Richard J. Soborski shall be confirmed to fill the unexpired controller vacancy at a salary of $65,000 effective February 16, 2018.
Okay, council discussion on this appointment for the controller. Mr. Kuzick?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend and strike Richard J. Soborski and replace it with Hayden Phillips.
I have a motion to strike and put Hayden Phillips.
I second that.
And I have a second, call for the vote? Discussion? Second, oh.
There may be other candidates.
Oh.
Wouldn't we vote on this, and then if it voted, then someone else can make a second amendment?
You can vote that one, and then if it passes, it passes, and if it doesn't, the floor is still up.
All right, call for the vote.
So could you clarify what the vote would be?
The vote is for Mr. Hayden Phillips for controller.
And so a no vote is no to amend?
A no vote is no to amend, yes, ma'am, sorry.
There's somebody flagging.
Not waiting.
Somebody's flagging.
I was watching, I was gonna, I was gonna be discussing for the appointment.
You didn't have.
We had courtesy of the floor.
We had courtesy of the floor, sir.
Okay, well, everyone was.
No.
No, I'm, we already had courtesy of the floor, sir.
It was advertised tonight, that was the discussion.
The discussion was last night. Courtesy of the floor was at the beginning of the meeting, that period of this is already over. Sorry.
Okay, so there's.
Right.
We are now in, we are now in the council's business.
Thank you. Could you, we have a vote for, to amend the ordinance, to have Mr. Phillips in place of, so, call for the vote.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
No.
Mr. Heckman?
No.
Mr. Craft?
No.
Mr. McGee?
No.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
No.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
And Ms. Zirinsky?
No.
Fails by a vote of three to six.
The amendment failed, so we're back to the original amendment. Vote for Mr. Soborski?
May I ask a question? Did Mr. Soborski say, is Mr. Soborski gonna run when his term is up?
No, Peg, he was here last night, you were on the phone, he said he was not going to run.
Okay, fine, I, that's what I, I just wanted to clarify again.
Thank you, Peg. Uh, my attorney's telling me I need a motion and a second to amend the amended amendment for the original thing, so.
We can just go forward.
So that we have it clear.
So that we are clear.
If the motion fails, we can just vote on.
Yeah. But you need a motion and a second, and the code requires the appointment by resolution.
I'll make a motion.
And I'll second.
I'll second it.
Tara. We have a motion and a second.
Thank you.
Now, can we call for the vote?
Hold on, hold on.
You gotta get quicker than that.
And before we go for the vote, I'll say, personally, I'm going to abstain, although I voted for Hayden, was that I do think that with three members, that we should have brought them forward, all to be voted on. And I realize I was not here last night, and I do apologize, but I do think, you know, when it was brought up, that there could be like 20, I agree with the consensus of narrowing it down, but with three, I do think that it should have been brought forward for everyone to have a chance to formally speak and have their, you know, council make the judgment on who they wanted to vote for.
Call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
I abstain.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yeah.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Craft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
No.
And Mr. Kuzick?
No.
Passed by a vote of six to two with one abstention.
Congratulations, Mr. Soborski, he's here, if he wants to make, say anything to council, are you?
I just want to say thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Good luck. Good luck.
Just one comment, it wasn't against you, you're obviously very well qualified, I do like the resume, and I think you'll do well in it, I just, you know, love the procedure of it.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the public defender's office. Mr. McGee, could you introduce the resolution, please?
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that one part-time position of clerical technician 3, pay grade of CR 151A, salary $16,300, shall be eliminated in the solicitor's office effective February 15, 2018. Be it further resolved by the North.
Hold on, hold on.
Did I miss the solicitor?
Okay, you were reading the solicitors, right?
I was reading the clerical technician.
That's what's first.
Yes.
For the solicitor?
Yes.
Okay, we're doing the solicitors, I'm sorry.
I had a word.
And Mr. McGee, you know, you're introducing the right one.
Okay, keep going.
I just misspoke, yes, please.
From the top?
No, just from where you were.
Be it further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of clerical technician 3, pay grade CR 151A, salary $32,475, shall be created in the solicitor's office effective February 15, 2018.
Any discussion on this position?
Just a comment, and this will apply to all three, these should have been included in last year's budget, and I intend to fully support them, and it's disappointing that they weren't. And if I would have known the need existed at that time, I would have pushed to make an amendment and put them in, so, bravo for adding it, and let's vote yes.
And I concur. Any other discussion on this? Can we call for the vote?
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
And Mr. Craft?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. The next thing is the public defender's office. Mr. McGee, could you please introduce the resolution?
Hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that one part-time position of the Assistant Public Defender, pay grade RS 6, salary of $49,306, shall be eliminated in the public defender's office effective February 15, 2018. Be it further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of Assistant Public Defender, pay grade CE 4, salary $71,029, shall be created in the public defender's office effective February 15, 2018.
Any discussion from council on this one? Same, same basic thing, it was a position that desperately needed to be filled. Call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Craft?
Yes.
And Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Next person or request we have is farmland preservation office, Mr. McGee.
Hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that one vacant, full-time position of farmland preservation resource specialist, pay grade of RU 25D, salary of $37,991, shall be eliminated in the Department of Administration, Farmland Preservation, effective February 15, 2018. Be it further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of farmland preservation resource specialist, pay grade of RU 25D, salary of $52,233, shall be created in the Department of Administration, Farmland Preservation, effective February 15, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. McGee, any discussion from council? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Craft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
And Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is consideration of a resolution amending the Conservation District Fee Schedule for Services. Ask for Mr. Heckman to introduce the resolution.
Yes, whereas Northampton County Council Ordinance Number 17-1979 provides that the Northampton County Council shall set fees charged by various county agencies by means of a resolution, and whereas the Northampton County Conservation District Board of Directors at its meeting held January 9, 2018, voted to revise the existing erosion and sediment pollution control plan review fee schedule, now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council that effective April 1, 2018, Northampton County Conservation District Erosion and Sediment Pollution Control Plan Review Fee Schedule shall be indicated on the attached Northampton County Conservation District Fee Schedule for Services Resolution, and this was covered at our finance committee meeting, and the information's attached.
Thank you. Is there any council discussion on this? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Craft?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
And Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is a consideration of a resolution amending Resolution Number 51-2014. Ms. Zirinsky, would you please introduce the resolutions?
Resolved by the, okay, whereas the county of Northampton implemented the Northampton County Open Space Initiative by enacting the Northampton County Open Space Ordinance Number 423-2004 on November 5, 2004, and whereas the Northampton County Open Space Advisory Board has recommended approval of the Moore Township Recreational Park Rehabilitation Phase 2 projects located in Moore Township, and whereas the Northampton County fund will be used as follows, property owner, Moore Township, site location, English Road, Bath, park development description, installation of dugouts, walkway, trail, double-seal roadway, appraised value, no acquisition, phase 2 municipal allocation, $154,466.22, county grant request, $53,970.57, which is 49.7%, now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council, one, the Northampton County Council hereby approves the Moore Township Recreational Park Rehabilitation Phase 2 projects located in Moore Township. Further, the Northampton County Executive, through the Office of the Program Administrator of the Northampton County 21st Century Open Space Initiative, is directed to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligation in this project. Two, Northampton County Council further directs the Northampton County Executive to appropriate Council further directs the Northampton County Executive to appropriate fifty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-seven cents at, as the Northampton County contribution to the Moore Township Recreational Park Rehabilitation Phase Two projects located in Moore Township.
Thank you. We had this, uh, in a meeting just before our council meeting tonight, is there any further discussion on this?
Just, uh, kudos to them for bringing it in under budget and on time.
Yeah, save us four thousand bucks. Any other discussion? Call for the vote.
Ms. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yeah.
Mr. Hackman?
Yes.
Mr. Craft?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
And Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
And next thing on the agenda is a consideration of a resolution to accept a donation of books to the jail. Mr. Hackman?
One of our more joyful responsibilities is accepting things people want to give us. So, whereas Northampton County Home Rule Charter, Section two-oh-two, provides that the county council shall have, among others, the following powers, to accept on behalf of the county any real gifts of real property and to provide for the acceptance of any agency on behalf of the county of other gifts, and whereas the Northampton County Jail has received a donation of four hundred and eighty-seven hardcover books and two thousand five hundred and fifteen softcover books from Hooked on Books with an estimated value of one thousand one hundred dollars. Now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council that it does hereby authorize the Director of Corrections to accept on behalf of the county of Northampton the donation of these books.
And I don't know if anybody from Hooked on Books is in the audience, but, uh, we thank them for their contribution, and is there any other discussion from council? Seeing none? Call for the vote.
Mr. Hackman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yeah.
Mr. Craft?
Yeah.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
And Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
All righty. Number seven, consideration of Article thirteen contract approval resolution with two-way communications. Mr. Hackman, introduce the bill, please. Resolution, sorry.
Okay. Um, all right, first one, it's, uh, whereas Northampton County Administrative Code Article thirteen procurement and disposition of county property, Section thirteen point six, contracts and agreements, CE, subsection two, requires approval of county council for any contract where costs are to be funded with monies outside of the county's general fund, such as those funded through bond indebtedness. Whereas on January twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, the Northampton County Council received a request from the county executive for county council to adopt a resolution endorsing a contract in the amount of seventy-two thousand for a term of twelve months with two-way communications to provide mission-critical configuration, seven-by-twenty-four-by-three-six-five network support, monitoring and management for the CAD network, wireless network, and ESI net, network within NCEMS. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with two-way communications to provide mission-critical configuration, seven-by-twenty-four-by-three-six-five network support, monitoring and management for the CAD network, wireless network, the ESI net, network within NCEMS.
Any discussion from county council? Call for the vote, please.
Mr. Hackman?
Yes.
Mr. Craft?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferraro?
Yeah.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Next thing we have is Essential Management Solutions LLC. Uh, Mr. Hackman, you only have to read the therefore be it resolved part of the, of these.
But they may want to hear the whole thing. All right, I'll just read the end. All right. Okay, I, I question for she, uh...
Well, that's, we've always done it that way.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with Essential Management Solution LLC for nine-one-one regionalization, consolidation, management services.
Any discussion from county council on this matter? Call for the vote.
Mr. Hackman?
Yes.
Mr. Craft?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferraro?
Yeah.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
All right, is there any other, uh, new business to discuss by county council tonight? Seeing none? Uh, council committee reports. Any committee reports?
I have a report on human, Health and Human Services. We just had our meeting prior to this meeting. Um, it was brought to light that there are several positions that have gone unfilled that are pretty essential, and so they'll be presenting those to us in the future, and I think ten days, twelve days in, Ms. Wanda Lasky's doing a great job. That's my report.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Finance committee.
Well, we, we did have a meeting, uh, yesterday, and the fruits of which we just voted on, uh, the things I read, plus to, again, announce that, uh, we're looking at a finance committee meeting on Tuesday, two-twenty-seven, at four P.M., and the topic is going to be the, well, be whatever you want, but the topic that's on the agenda is the, uh, ordinance that was introduced, or, tonight.
Are there any council liaison reports?
I have one, for Parks and Recreation.
Go ahead, Ms. Rinsky.
Um, it was brought up at our meeting, I believe it was, uh, last Tuesday, um, that there was a two thousand and twelve municipal fund that allocated, uh, to funding for individual municipalities at three point seven million per year that they could draw from, and there was a question of whether or not we could reinstate that as either a budget line item or as a bond.
I, not, Mr. Kuzic, do you remember that?
I, I'm not particularly familiar with that. I, I think that the one question that, that I've heard is whether or not council and the administration plan a phase-three of the municipal park program, which is a separate issue.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that either, but...
I'm just reading what they told me.
I, I just don't remember that.
I have no recollection.
There's a municipal parks fund at some point in time. They said in two thousand and twelve.
Well, if it was two thousand and twelve...
And then it, it just ended recently.
We were all here.
Again...
I think she's talking about the municipal park program that we just ended.
So it's going to be a phase-three, like you just said.
And I think the total amount is what she was talking about.
Okay, uh, yeah, and that, what I would urge you to do is take a look at, uh, the, the phase-two that we just completed at the end of last year, and phase-one, which ended, I believe, in like two thousand and ten or so, um, and then the question is whether or not, um, this body and this administration wish, wishes, wishes to implement another round of municipal park grants. That may be what they're referring to. I, I'm not sure otherwise.
I believe that is what they were referring to.
Okay.
The way that they stated it, to me, was a little different than what I'm hearing from you, but I think that we're on the same page in asking for, um, some allocation of funds to municipalities for their parks and recreation.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chair, capital projects?
Yeah.
Sure. Okay, real fast.
Sorry I missed your meeting, I completely forgot it was that night, because it's an odd night for me.
It's an odd, it's been an odd night for everybody.
It's been a long night.
No, that meeting was an odd night, I just, just missed it, sorry.
The capital projects, very quickly, uh, we, every, every council member now has a copy of the, the, uh, review of the two thousand and seven projects, it was twenty million dollars plus in, uh, projects, uh, five of which are under budget, and most are completed, as was promised in two thousand and seventeen, including generators that are going to be up at Greystale, that will, the ground will be broken and the foundation will be built, and the generators will be up there after a hundred years of waiting and removing many people. So, um, very quickly, I want to give, extend a, a kudos to Michael M., Emily, the new director, and to Scott Parsons for doing a, a fine job of, of going back and finding everything and bringing it to you, okay? That's my report.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports?
I attended the Greystale meeting last week. Pretty much what you heard tonight in Health and Human Services is what we discussed, that there'll be some new funding stream coming down, or, or actually, that might impact them in three years, but what we discussed at the meeting was we were going to watch and see what happened to the western counties and bring that information back as soon as possible. And that's it, you know, you heard, um, they're doing well, issues with behavioral health management, issues with staffing, but they're handling it and they're maintaining their rating.
Thank you, Mr. Sefter. Any other?